Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock and I would like to call this meeting to order. If you would please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Connie.
Chris Mikowski.
Here.
Terry Lautner.
Here.
Kyle Travis.
Here.
Jeff Shaw.
Here.
Dave Darga.
Here.
Jordan Gallagher. Excused, Connie Preston here.
Thank you. Item number four, Declaration of Conflict of Interest. If any board member has any perceived conflict, if you could declare that at this time. Okay, seeing none, I would like to move on to item number five, Public Comment. You have three minutes if you would like to address the board and if you don't mind giving us your name and address, we would like that. And please direct your comments directly to the board and not to anyone else in the room. So it is 6:01 and I'd like to open Public Comment. Come on up to the podium. Thank you.
My name is Doug Downer, 4299 Cherry Lane, Traverse City. I'm a slipholder at the Marina. And last year, our electricity at the Marina was turned off mid-October. Our contract with the Marina states numerous items that we have to do and certain things that the Marina has to do. And one of the things we pay for until the end of October is electricity in our slip. So on a nice October afternoon, we have a chance to enjoy some of the last nice days and we come down to our boat. It's forty-five or fifty degrees. We have an electric heater and it doesn't work because the electricity had been turned off. There's more than a few of us that were upset about that. And so I just would like to say to the board that we'd like to have your assurances that you'll meet your obligations to keep the electricity on to the end of October. I don't know if you were aware of that, but you are now, so. And I know we're going to talk later about larger projects at the Marina. And I know there's a consensus among us as we talk about it, the slipholders, that we'd like to keep it down. We don't want to have our rates go up. We have nice facilities. There are things that could be improved, but I think we're going to talk about it in the meeting today. The general consensus among us slipholders is we don't need to go big time with the facilities. We've got very nice facilities, so. My primary thing is let's keep the electricity out to the end of October. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time?
Eric Curran, 10212 East Cherry Bend Road, Traverse City. Thank you very much for looking at alternate options for the very expensive Phase Three of the Marina. I do like that you are listening to the Marina slipholders and finding that, you know, five to six million dollars is not necessary. With the new phase that I see, although I think a hundred fifty thousand for landscaping is a bit high, at least it brings it down, so it's only thirteen to fourteen thousand per slip in the Marina. And with that, I'm sure that you can make the new rates no greater than the Michigan maximum rates allowable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jody Mackey, 1058 Washington Street, Traverse City. I'm an Almond Township Marina slipholder. I'm just here to, again, express my concern about the lack of communication by the Marina staff with the boating community. I think it's kind of silly I have to come here to say this. It just seems like something that leadership there should know and understand that it's 2023 and using email and text messaging to let us know if there's water issues for a day, if parking's going to be disrupted, if, you know, they're starting to move boats, things like that. An email takes seconds. It actually takes more time to go put signs up on the bathroom doors, and I'm not saying not to do that. I just would like an email. I don't live close to the Marina. And I just, again, I don't understand why this is just, it's a seemingly systemic issue at the Marina. I just would like to see improved communication by the townships, not the township, you guys do a good job of communicating, the Marina staff with the boating community. That is my ask once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this time? It's 6:06 and I would like to close Public Comment. Moving on to item number six, the Consent Calendar. The purpose of this consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the public, board, or staff may ask that any item of the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. This evening, we have our Treasurer's Report, Planning and Zoning, Harbor Master Report, Post Audit Invoices, 9:1523 through 9:3023, and minutes from our 9:1123 meeting. Any member of staff that would like anything removed and placed elsewhere, any member of the public, or any board member? Seeing none, I look for a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Any modifications to the agenda this evening? If not, I would look for a motion for the agenda.
Would you approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Reports, Supervisor's remarks, you've got that. I gave you several emails that we got regarding Timberly Water and Cedar Lake. I also gave you some information on Cedar Lake. And obviously, we'll be talking about Timberly Water here shortly. So anybody have any questions for me about the stuff I gave you or the Supervisor's report? Okay, if not, trustee remarks. Any trustees? Okay. Engineers' report. Ken, you got anything for us other than agenda items?
Agenda's it.
Okay. Other officer remarks. We don't have rookie here. Chief, did you want to come up and give us your fire report?
It might have been late to your packet, but last month, we had forty-eight calls for service, one assist on a structured fire that was out on the peninsula. We usually end up sending them where their tanker truck out there is what they're usually calling for. Nothing atypical, except for you'll note that we did have a pretty significant accident on Bougai Road last month, what we call an MCI, Mass Casualty Incident, resulted in seven patients going to the hospital, one unfortunately passed. And I indicate to all the agencies that assisted in, our thanks to all of them to help things go smoothly and get those patients to the hospital. I did forget, however, neglected to thank the public that stopped and offered a hand in helping move patients and getting a lot of harm's way. One of the vehicles had caught fire. Law enforcement showed up, was able to get there before we had gotten there and control the fire before it spread. And so there was a lot going on in this two-car crash. And so a lot of people involved and fortunately for, it had a bad outcome, but it could have been significantly worse, so. A lot of testing and maintenance went on last month, from trucks to equipment. A lot of annual stuff, certification stuff that needed follow-up and some projects there with the bathrooms and our station alerting system. Continued to see quotes from plumbers and tile guys for the bathrooms, but just about ready to get all, just about have all the quotes we need to move forward on that. Also, we did a startup on our boiler and furnace and it's not in the report because I just discovered, learned it today. Had to have the guy back today because we might have a leak in the system. Crossed my fingers. He left before I could talk to him. Was out on an incident, but hopefully that's minor in nature, so. I think that's about it from my standpoint, unless you guys have anything, any questions to me?
Anything for the chief?
Thanks, chief. Communications from the clerk?
Again, we just passed along a lot of letters from the public regarding the Timberly Water system and the Cedar Lake levels. That was about it.
Okay. We have no old business. Item 10A, Timberly Water. Dawn Lund is here from Utility Financial Solutions. She's going to give us a kind of a brief overview of the presentation she gave to the public the other night. That actually went really well. I don't know, was there about fifty people there, probably, something like that? So they had lots of questions and I think, like I said, I think it went really well and kind of clarified with people what we're looking at out there.
If the presentation is going to be given, the board might want to take a step back.
Yep, so we get to filter in over there, so.
Perfect. Well, thank you and good evening. Thank you so much for having me back tonight. I'm going to talk about real briefly the four options for the Timberly Water. I'm going to go over the financial position under each scenario and how it would affect the ratepayers. Real briefly about our firm, I'm the Vice President of Utility Financial Solutions. We do cost of service studies, financial plans, and rate designs for utilities across the country, Canada, Guam, and the Caribbean. I also teach financial planning for municipals and speak for joint action agencies across the country. Just important to note tonight, the costs and the projections in the scenarios I'm showing you are the best data we have available today. Costs are increasing at unprecedented rates and when these actually go out to bid, I'm sure the costs that are quoted to you today will not be exactly how the bids come in. So please keep in mind, this is the best information we have today. The scenarios do require bonding. The bonding has not been set. The term has not been set and the interest rate has not been set. So there's a few open pieces here with some moving parts, but this is the best information we have today and it should be close to the scenarios that I'm presenting today. When I was here in June, initially, I had been hired to do a financial projection for the Timberly Water system at that time. It was anticipated that the water tank would be right around four hundred thousand dollars. That's the scenario I presented in June. At that time, I told the board that if you look at this column here with the cash balances, the system currently has a nice cash balance. We have an opportunity to spend that down a little bit. I don't want to spend it down too much. It takes a long time to build up cash. But when we have an extraordinary project like this, that's what that cash is for. So in my original scenario, I spent the cash balance down about a hundred thousand dollars to borrow a little bit less than what the capital improvement program project would be. At the time, the capital improvement project was anticipated to be about four hundred thousand dollars. I anticipated that you would need to borrow about two hundred and ten thousand dollars and at the same time, raise rates about five percent each year for the next five years. Again, that was the scenario we knew at the time. Since then, there were quotes on four different scenarios. Those are what I'm going to cover now. Option one is replacing the existing tank with two small used tank. That project is anticipated to be about six hundred thousand dollars. The system would need to borrow about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars under this scenario one. And rate increases would be projected at about six percent each year for the next five years. I'm going to show you at the end of the presentation what these percentages convert to on a dollar basis to the ratepayers there. So I will get there under each scenario. So again, first scenario, it's replacing the existing tank with two small used tanks, six hundred thousand dollars. The project, you would need to borrow four hundred and twenty-five thousand in addition to have rate increases of about six percent. You can see, I just tried to maintain that three hundred thousand dollars like I did in that scenarios that I presented in June, spending down cash slightly. The second option is replacing the existing tank with two small new tanks. That option is eight hundred thousand dollars. The system would need to borrow about six hundred and forty thousand dollars with rate increases of seven percent each year for the next five years. Option three is very close to option two on a dollar basis. The difference being that the existing tank would be replaced with the same size new tank. That option is about seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The system would need to borrow about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars with seven percent increases as well. So scenario two and three are very similar from a cost perspective. The fourth scenario is actually replacing the existing tank with a gravity storage tank, and that would be for domestic use only. That option's about one point six million dollars. The system would need to borrow about one point five million dollars with thirteen point five percent rate adjustments or increases for the next five years. The next slide I'm going to show you is just simply showing you taking all these scenarios and how it would affect the ratepayers in that area. Currently, the ratepayer is paying thirty-one dollars a month under option one at six percent. That would move from thirty-one dollars to thirty-three dollars or a two-dollar-a-month increase. We can see option two and three are very similar. We would move from thirty-one dollars to thirty-three twenty-five or a two-dollar-and-twenty-five cent increase. Option four, a thirteen-and-a-half percent increase. I'm moving from thirty-one dollars to thirty-five twenty-five for a four-dollar-and-twenty-five cent per month increase. Again, this is a five-year program. Even at the end of five years, as costs change and other capital is needed possibly in the system, this isn't the end-all-be-all. As soon as we get done with this program, it doesn't mean you're forever done with rate increases. Certainly, what I'm showing you here are these particular projects just trying to get you back to that about three hundred thousand dollar level. And as costs and inflation and things change in the future, that, the projection should be updated to reflect that in the future. But again, the ratepayers are paying about thirty-one dollars a month. At the end of option one, they would pay about forty-one fifty. Option two and three, that would move to about forty-three fifty over the five-year projection period. And option four would move from thirty-one dollars to about fifty-eight seventy-five by the end of the five-year projection period. Do you guys have any questions on any of the scenarios that I covered or any of the rate impacts to the ratepayer?
So any board members have any questions before we move back to the table? We've been through this review before, so everybody's pretty good understanding. So let's move back to the table. If you want, if you could stay there and maybe Ken could join us.
For sure.
So I think all the board members are aware of why we're doing this. And just real briefly, for anybody that's not aware, it's not something we really want to do as a township, but we're being forced to do it by Eagle, formerly DEQ. So I said at that meeting, it's not, we don't want to spend those people's money, but unfortunately, we have to. So we're trying to pick out the best scenario to make that happen. So, so Ken, maybe you could address any questions of the board, the different options. I will tell you regarding the financing, I've been dealing with bond counsel and what's the other guy, Connie?
Pat McGowan.
Pat McGowan.
Warren Kramer.
Yeah. And if we choose what we're going to do with Timberly and Phase Three of the Marina, we may be able to wrap that all together in a bond, which would potentially save us quite a bit of money over the long term of it. So if we figure out what we want to do with Timberly and Marina Phase Three tonight, that'll give us some pretty good financial, relatively good numbers, and then next month, I'll bring you back some financing options. So I'm kind of waiting to see what we do tonight and then we'll have those options to look at next month. So just so you know, no pressure, but if we pick that tonight, I can come back with some finance. So, so do you guys have questions for Ken regarding the different options? I will tell you, Ken and I went out today, we measured the existing building and we're trying to figure out if we could put those, if we chose, say, the two new tanks, if they would fit in that building, which would obviously save us more money if we didn't have to build a completely new building. And I don't know if you had a chance to vet any of that out yet, Ken or not?
Well, just a little bit, not in depth. I think there's certainly potential. If we have new tanks, we can, to some extent, pick the dimensions of the tank. Once you're over a certain size of tank, it's a custom order, so they make the tank when you order it. So we can maybe make it a little shorter and a little taller, so there may be more options with a new tank. Whereas by used tanks, it is what it is. You got to fit the building to the tank. So I'd say there may be potential to use that existing building. There's currently a generator in there that we'd have to find a new home for, so it wouldn't be a complete wash of building improvements. You know, there'd still be stuff we'd have to do to that building to make it feasible.
It's the biggest generator I've ever seen. It's not a trailer. It's a monster. That's small? Wow.
Our generator is cool.
Yeah. So I just got to say this. So the generator is this on a double-axle trailer, this monster that takes up the whole room? And the air pump is like this big. That just cracked me up. So guys have questions, thoughts? Yeah, Connie?
Just a question about the building. So I was thinking, I was looking at using the old tanks versus the new tanks. One of the major costs with the short lifespan, even though there's a lot of cash savings, is either we have to like knock a wall out of the building to replace the tanks. Or is there a way to get, like, will they build the tanks into the building or like, that we wouldn't have to knock down half the building to get the tanks in?
So that's a good question. So one of the things we've, we can do here is we can significantly downsize the tank. So a hydronematic tank system, it's not truly storage. It's, it's, it just helps the well pump from kicking on and off constantly. So we don't need fifteen thousand, that big fifteen-thousand-gallon tank that's there. We can have a much smaller tank and still meet the requirements and have it operate properly. So the tanks are actually about six-foot diameter, so they can go into a standard garage door.
Oh.
As long as you have a standard garage door. So that existing building does have a, it's got a good-sized door, so I don't think that would be an issue.
So that would, well, I guess, but the the used tanks wouldn't fit through that garage door?
They would. One of the installations, I'm not sure it would come out of the building through the existing door.
Okay.
So I added some cost for the taking out the tank of the used tank. One of the installations has a very tight door and I think it'd have to take some wall out to get it out.
Where are the used ones located right now?
Garfield Township.
That's six miles, six miles long.
It is, yeah. They actually have three tanks and John could probably explain them better. There's two that we are considering that are completely housed in a building. Those are the ones we investigated. There's one that is a partial burial and it's, I wouldn't recommend pursuing that one. I think it could have a lot of challenges. And you don't know what the two-thirds of the tank looks like because it's been buried for thirty years. But two of the tanks are in a building. You can see the entire tank, easy to inspect and access. But any installation, there's some removals required. The one that has a nice big door to pull out, there's electrical panels and there's piping to remove, just to physically remove the tank. So there is cost to get the tanks to where we can even get them on a truck with those used tanks. The tanks are, there's a Hurtner tank on Hurtner Road. The Munson tank, which is, it's in the Munson, I'm not exactly sure what road that's on, but it's Red Drive, Red Drive, that's right. And then Greyhawk is just off Cedar Road. That's a partial buried tank in a subdivision.
I will say that, you know, after the meeting, you guys got the emails. We got the vast majority of the people that attended were in favor of the two new tanks, just because when you look at the cost, there's, it's a relatively small difference in their monthly water feed. And most people felt that, you know, having the new tanks that would last potentially twice as long made more sense. Just, just so you know.
So what do you want from us? Do you want a motion to go ahead with the new tanks?
Yes, sir.
Two new tanks?
Yep.
I'd make a motion to go ahead with the two new tanks at Timberly Water Systems.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Further discussion? Ken did say that the new tanks are about six months out at this point?
They are. Once you place your order, it is at six months out. Let's, actually, after you approve the submittals.
Okay.
It's a long process to get the tanks on site.
And we did submit a intent to apply for the SRF funding loan, state revolving fund loan. That was due a couple of weeks ago. So it doesn't cost us anything, but potentially, we could apply for that. I know it's very competitive and not, not a great chance, but at least we have the opportunity to apply for that. And as far as bonding goes, if it's six months out, it actually, timing-wise, you know, if we're going to throw it all together in a bond, the projects would have to be done at pretty close to the same time. And that might actually work out well with Phase Three and these tanks being six months out. It's, you know, timing-wise, it might work out well, so. Discussion, Dave?
If we're talking about the new tanks, are we talking about this total proposal then with the new building? Or are you going to look to put the tanks in the old, the existing building? So that would modify this estimate?
It would, absolutely. I would, I would look first to utilize the existing building, see if that can be done. So essentially, there's still some preliminary design that needs to be done before we can take the next step. The biggest step is, you guys just took, is it's two new tanks now. Now I got a true target I can really design around.
I do have another question in regards to the building. If we put it on exterior building, we build a new building, why do we need a concrete floor? That's a lot of extra expense. Insulation with crushed stone on top would be more than adequate, which should be a much cheaper version.
It would be.
And the insulation would actually barrier the ground from freezing and/or transfer of heat cold.
So to be honest, I haven't seen an insulation that didn't have a concrete floor.
Oh, yeah. Built it all the time, yeah.
In a municipal setting. Typically, for, typically, it's just, you can keep the building much cleaner. So, I guess I haven't, I haven't looked into that, to be honest.
I mean, our tank, existing tank is outside. So, you're mowing around it and messing around with it all the time. If you're going to put it into a building, a crushed stone building is very clean. You can get water on the floor, do whatever you have to do, still heat it, but it's much cheaper. Drive on it, do whatever you want.
Could be something we could look at.
Hopefully, you don't have to use that new building now.
Well, very possibly, but if we going down that road, I'd rather ask the question now, pose it, than to have him keep coming back. Well, we need to move forward.
Like Ken said, now that he knows, well, we haven't voted on it yet, but now that he potentially will have a target, he can give us some of those details as we move forward. Because certainly, the costs aren't going to be exact on one over that, you know? There's going to be some changes, but...
But even pole building could be smaller if we can adjust our tank sizes and parameters.
There's a, at this stage, there's a lot of moving parts.
Moving parts, yeah.
Yeah. But hopefully, I've given you, hopefully, what I think is the worst case scenario.
Right.
And it goes down from there, but...
Perfect.
John, do you feel like you need to add anything at this point? You could, okay. Any other discussion? Let's do a roll call, just because we're spending money.
Okay. Kyle Travis?
Yes.
Dave Darga?
Yes.
Terry Lautner?
Yes.
How about yes? Chris Mikowski?
Yes.
And Jeff Shaw?
Yes. Thank you. Thanks, Ken. Thanks for being here, John. Thank you, Don. Appreciate it. Don't go far, Ken. Marina Phase Three cost update. I did speak to Ray Kendra about this, our architect. He doesn't have any concerns with moving the building to the existing site where the buildings are. And Sarah and I had a discussion with Lynne Dawson today from the granting agency, Waterways. And at least initially, she didn't seem to have any concerns with the funding part of this. If we, if we don't raise the wall and we move the building, she didn't seem to think. Now, she, she still needs to look at it, but her initial response was it shouldn't be a problem. So, we shouldn't lose any funding by doing this. So, so, go ahead, Ken.
All right. So, I gave everybody a packet of what we, what we put together, and this is just a preliminary layout and the cost estimate as well. We just wanted to let you know what it could look like. Certainly, if we were to move forward with this, there'd be sitting down with Marina staff and, you know, making sure the handicap spaces are in the right position, seeing if stuff works for them the way they need it to. But basically, in a nutshell, the existing site, as it sits now, does fit the proposed building we've been looking at. The existing buildings are above the new floodplain elevation, so we'd take care of that issue. We kept the buildings about the same height and elevation. At this point, we left in the new seawall along the creek, so that is, it's permitted. We've got the green light from Army Corps to do that portion, so we left that in the estimate. Even though there's not a building right there, it'd still be nice to protect that corner after what we saw in the last couple of years. So, the rest of the parking lot itself really wouldn't change significantly. We propose new utilities, just to get those up to date. But the rest of the parking lot would essentially remain as you see it now, but with an overlay. So, it'd be a fresh look, but the grades wouldn't change. We're not adding fill, we're just basically repaving over the top of it. So, that's, that's really where the significant cost savings come from. If we're not touching the existing seawall and we're not, we're not changing the entire grade of the site, there's a lot of cost savings in that. You know, some of the items, you know, we're working with the state, they have requirements for, they may have requirements for amenities, depending on what was in the, in the application. So, like I say, someone mentioned the landscape budget was pretty, pretty high. We're in a preliminary state, we haven't worked out all those details. I don't want to give you too low of a number. You know, I'm trying to estimate a little conservatively at this point.
So, you guys have questions for Ken, thoughts? I mean, saves about 1.9 million at this point, which is huge.
Did we gain some parking spots? Did we gain some parking spots with this? It kind of almost looks like we may have.
By moving it?
Yeah.
We actually gained one spot.
One spot? Okay. It didn't look like the good idea. Squeeze it tight. I think it looks much better than the whole plan.
Thank you, you guys. Let me just say, thanks for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you for listening.
Well, you know, one of the benefits is we can continue to store boats on that south wall, which we were going to lose that opportunity. So, and that's become a, a nice revenue, revenue source for us as well. So, it also leaves that, that part of the Marina wall open. So, working on, Pete had mentioned this, working on the docks and all that kind of stuff becomes simpler. So...
A motion?
Yep. Yep. I think so. I think a motion to, you know, approve the new design.
I'd make a motion that we approved the new design per the presentation.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Further discussion on this? No, I do see the next item is you guys need more money for the design.
We do. I mean, this changes every, every sheet in that sixteen sheet plan that we've put together.
Right?
Forty-five grand.
So, that should be included, I guess, in the...
In the overall?
In the, yeah.
And again, that's, you know, you get away the cost benefit of it.
Sure.
There's significant amount of rework.
Okay. Forty-five grand worth. I should have, I should have gone to engineering school.
I would make mo, revise the motion?
Sure.
To include the engineer's amount of forty-five thousand dollars.
Support.
Okay, so we have a motion and support.
Support's revised.
Okay. More discussion, thoughts, questions?
I have my...
Yeah.
We don't have the architect here. I still want to know how expensive this window is. Because I don't get it. And it looks expensive.
Okay. That's certainly something, as we move forward with this, we can address with...
Are you gaining four chairs? That's, that is worth something. If you're going to put people in it.
Jeff, sorry, but can you just like give us like sort of a summation of the board? Like how many showers? You know, like you did that, can you just say what it's going to have?
So, for the building?
Yeah.
I can...
If you have it in front of you, Ken.
Sure. So, so the ar, we have an architect as a consultant that laid out the entire building. And it is reduced down. That might be a lot easier to explain it with.
Same as the whistle last month.
Yep.
Same one.
Same one, just moved it.
Yep. Same one, just a new spot.
Yes, that's right. When the architect was here at the previous meeting, it is the same building. We just had him mirror it. And basically, what that does is it puts your outside space close to the large green area, that's going to be where the existing buildings are, are being removed. And then, the seating area actually then looks out towards the creek and the bay on that side.
This is the revised or downsized that was presented last month.
Last month, yeah.
Yep.
So, other questions, other thoughts, other discussion? We have a motion, we had support. All in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, you guys. Ken, thanks for all your work on this. I know we've kind of changed direction a couple of times on you, but we appreciate it, so... Naughty Cat. Speaking of big boats sitting on the wall.
You need another packet, Jeff.
Yeah, is there anybody that doesn't have a packet?
You can try.
Has everybody got one? Yeah, if we could give one to Chris, that would be great. And Connie needs one too? Do you have a couple of them? Jack? Okay.
Right here. Thank you.
On the first packets that I gave you, Jeff, I didn't include the certificate of insurance.
Okay. Thank you.
You have one on the... You can slide that if you... So, last year, when we came and you guys granted our request to, to do some cosmetic repairs on the starboard side of the Naughty Cat. And at that time, we committed to document that so that in case this comes up again, you can at least have some sort of an outline of how we did it and what I think that we were successful in doing everything that we promised we would do. So, I wouldn't mind if we just kind of leaf through this pretty quickly, and then I'm going to be asking for the opportunity to, to finish the project this year, meaning doing the port side exact same way as we did the starboard side. In the very first picture, it shows the haul out date. But what you'll notice is you can already see that the tarp was laid under the, under the structure. That way, that we can wrap the starboard side pretty efficiently. The next photo, it shows the tarp being spread out all along the bottom of the boat. And then, you can see the structure, the, that we roughed in, two by four by ten, and then sheeted with OSB. The third photo is kind of showing the inside with the structure built, starting to get it wrapped up with just the tarps. Next photo shows the tarps, how much extra tarp we had to bring that tarp and envelope the structure. Next photo shows just the tarp coming up on the inside of the catamaran, finishing the enveloping of the, that pontoon. Photos just showing getting ready, getting ready to wrap the structure. Second, next photo after that, more of the same. Photo after that is when we completed the shrink wrap. And you can kind of see, we were able to, we bought the shrink wrap large enough to completely wrap the whole top side of the Naughty Cat, wrapping the structure that we built all in one piece. Next structure is the front door. That's my handiwork of a front door. This is a great picture where we wrapped and double wrapped the structure. You can see where the tarp came up along the bottom and, and then with the shrink wrap coming over the top of it. We never did have any issues with wind or tearing. It stayed in, stayed in place. The first time that we started our actual sanding and, and work was on January seventh. And that kind of shows just the inside and our setup with the lights. I know some of these are kind of repetitive, but we put them in. Again, just more general construction, getting ready. I took a picture of the generator. I'd probably have lost everybody. Oh, you're on the right page. Took a picture of the generator, and we had the spill apparatus underneath that. We ended up making a deal with CenterPoint to use their electricity. So, I did not, I didn't need the generator anymore. And I was able to, I reached out to CenterPoint, and again, I can plug into their electricity. The only thing that we're using electricity is just for our work lights. So, they were more than happy to provide that. And I also was able to get two more parking passes so that we don't have to park in the, right there at the structure. We can park next door and walk in. So, we ended up getting a compressor, a diesel compressor for, to run all the tools. Pretty large diesel compressor. You can see the back of it, and you can see the diesel cans there. A lot of times, when we needed to fill up the diesel generator, Shane would just take it across the street and filled it up there. But there were times that we did have diesel on the location, but we always kept it in those containment pads. We're going to do the same this year. Same compressor, same situation. Here is just the spill kits and absorbent pads we had on location. What it doesn't show is the, I think, fire extinguisher is about the only other thing that we had on location. Again, just kind of general work, filling and sanding. Next to the, getting towards the end, just showing it, the structure being painted, and the gel coat. And Dave, and I know you asked last year, you're going to go, okay, how are you going to get it warm enough for the gel coat? Well, we were able to do that, but we kind of had to wait till like May fourth to get that heat in there. But we did have the, it did get heated, he did it in sections, and it actually turned out amazing. And again, the very last picture is the Naughty Cat getting ready to be put back in. This year, the plan is to start earlier. Now that we've done this, everybody knows the routine we plan on. We get hauled out, we'll be in the parking lot this Friday. And we'll have the structure built on top of the Naughty Cat and the structure for the side for the repairs. We plan on having that finished, hopefully by the weekend, through the weekend, and waiting for a good day to get it all shrink wrapped. But we plan on getting a good start on this by November and hopefully having this done sometime in January, February.
Guys have questions? I mean, we went through this last year with them and...
Correct. I don't know of any complaints?
I had one call.
Okay. Is it the same one that I think I know about? Somebody wanted to rent a...
Somebody thought we were...
B R B always?
Somebody thought we were renting it out down there somehow, so I have no explanation for that. But they, I, it was an anonymous call, and I asked whoever it was to come in, and they never showed, and we never heard from them again, so...
I think Pete, I think he's in Florida, right?
Yeah.
He's, I asked if he could come, he said, obviously, no. But I think that he sent an email?
He and I talked.
Okay.
I know that he got one. But he had no issues at all with it, so...
I don't think, Clem, we never heard of any... I don't think Clem, we never heard of anything.
No, so. Other than you guys renting it out apparently.
Right.
Yeah. So, guys have any other questions? Okay, so we would need a motion to approve this again.
I'd make a motion.
So we have a motion and support. Any discussion?
I'll say the same thing I said before is I don't think Elwood should be turning it into a commercial boatyard. But I think he did a good job last year.
Thank you.
And it turned out well.
Anything else? All in favor, please say yes. Yes. Opposed?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item D, Marina seasonal rates. So we got the new rates from the DNR. I wish Pete was here, but he's not. So those haven't changed for the last four or five years.
Mm-hmm.
So. And we went through the presentation last year with our consultants. You know, we changed other rates. What's everybody's thoughts on this? We figure cost of living is 3.7%. If anybody is interested in that, that's, that was the best number we can come up with for this, this past year. Our consultant had recommended that we keep that in mind as we move forward. So if you're looking, Kyle, 3.7% of like a 30-foot slip would be $122. 35-foot slip would be 142, 45. A 38-foot slip would be 154. And a 40-foot slip would be 162, 80. And I can do the moorings, too. But 4% would be 132, 154, 167, 176. So it would be more, if that's the way the board is interested in going. So I guess, what's everybody's thoughts on this?
Maximum.
I think.
What's everybody's thoughts?
I think we have to keep up with inflation.
Yeah.
If we don't do that, we're actually stepping back.
You're already above what you should be.
I agree with Connie. It's, it's one of those things, the state bases there, I've done this for 25 years or more. The state bases there. Overall sheet on particular areas in Michigan, depressed areas and then the better areas kind of get a bonus. The areas are premier, premier areas. And I, I think, I agree with Connie 100% that it should be raised to keep up with inflation. It's, it's one of those things that you just have to do. You've got to maintain what we have and we're looking at spending a lot of money. A good example is the Timberly water situation that we didn't accumulate funds, enough funds for. And now we're having to go out and do bonds for them. I think it's a good deal that we are changing the marina to compensate for a more reasonable approach. But we still have to have a good approach on the slips and the pricing of the facility.
Other thoughts?
For this year, for this moment, I guess I would agree with 3.7. I often expressed I don't think we should get whatever we can out of it, but we, we are behind financially given our plans to spend, so I don't think, as Connie said, we should be moving backwards unfortunately.
Okay. Any other thoughts, Terry, Chris?
I guess it's, you know, I didn't want to go above three and a half, but if, if 3.7 is what we decide, I'd probably support that.
Chris, any thoughts?
No.
Okay. Well, I know, you know, what happens with the state is they'll just all of a sudden raise it. We don't know when that's coming. We don't know how much. You know, we had hoped that they would have updated their numbers this year because of the inflation. I almost said inflammation again. Chiropractor, too many years. You know, that's been up and down, so, you know, I, yeah, I agree with Connie. I think we need to raise it just the rate of inflation and at least stay even with where we are and we'll see what the state rates are next year. That's, I guess that's my thought on it.
And we'll just, if we decide to go ahead, we'll just have to notify Linnay Dawson and
Yep.
discuss it and go from there. I think, you know, the fact that they've more or less pulled the rug out from under us from what we had been.
For funding.
For funding as far as the grants and then all of a sudden, wow, we can't spend that much.
Right.
So I think they should, would agree with our increase.
Any other thoughts? We would need a motion if that's what we want to go with.
So I guess to clarify and maybe clarify with the motion, so are we talking the same three and a half for the inside and outside moorings?
Yes.
And are we also?
Transient.
We can raise our transients?
Sure. Yep.
So that, yeah, I would say.
Yeah.
Everything.
Yeah, and act.
Everything up to those rates.
Right.
You addressed all the other rates.
And actually, if you look, we are on rate G for transients and there are a couple of other rates that we could go up to if we prefer to do it that way. We could go up to H, which is a step up in the transient rates. There's H, I, and J that all go up. So if we prefer to do transient rates separately, we could do that or we could just do 3.7% on every, on all of our slip fees.
So.
So right now, we're at H, I believe, if I remember right.
We're at G.
I'm sorry, we're at G. You can go up to H.
I would suggest we go up to H. That way it's more unified with what the state's rates are as far as H, I, J.
Okay.
And maybe we're at 44 dollars instead of 42.
Well, it'll be easier for them, the state, because they're collecting, we're collecting the money through.
Right, through the.
That system.
Through the reservation system.
Reservation system, exactly.
Okay, so, so why don't we do two different motions on that, just to keep it cleaner if, if we're doing that?
I'd make a motion to increase the slip rates, the seasonal permit fee slip rates and the mooring inside and outside rates from the 2023 rates by three and a half percent.
Three and a half or 3.7?
3.7, sorry.
Okay, just clarifying. Okay.
Support.
So we have a motion and support. Do we have further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
I'd make a motion to move the transient rates from the existing G category, we're starting at $40 per 25-foot boat, to the H category. Starting at $44 for a 25-foot boat, $53 for a 30-foot boat, $61 for a 35, and $70 for a 40-foot boat.
Support.
Motion and support, discussion about the transient fees. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item E, budget amendment? Go ahead, Connie.
So the budget amendment, as you can see, the metro fund, we need to allow an expenditure to pay for the blue water road improvements. So I'm asking for that fund to be, that line item to be increased to $26,600. And then I had not, during our 2022 budgeting for 2023, I kept the election budget low, but I found I needed to start buying envelopes and get ready because I'll be sending out ballots probably in January. So I've already put in orders for some of those. And we had to get all new envelopes again because now they all have to have a postage prepaid by the state. So they all have to have that permit number put on them and even the return envelopes for the applications. So that's the reasoning on that, so increasing by operating supplies by a thousand and office supplies by a thousand, which is what we put postage under. So we still have to pay for the outgoing. So with that, I would make the motion to adopt Resolution 16 of 2023, a budget amendment resolution.
Support.
Motion and support, discussion. Roll call vote, please, Connie.
I'll vote yes. Dave Dargah?
Yes.
Kyle Travis?
Yes.
Terry Lautner?
Yes.
Chris Mikowski?
Yes.
And Jeff Shaw?
Yes, thank you. Item F, Metro Act right-of-way permit extension, AT&T?
This is the same renewal we've done multiple times and it just.
Yep, same one.
It's the same one and this basically then AT&T is, that money goes to the state and then that's where we get those metro funds from that we're now using and those can be used for any road right-of-way project.
Is this a negotiated fee?
I don't believe we can do that.
How is it's?
It's under the Metro Act. It's the state.
Okay, all right.
Metro Act for the state, so.
Sorry for the conversation right now.
No, it's good.
We, we negotiate most everything.
Yeah, they don't pay us anything directly.
Right, right.
The first time we renewed this, I called all the time at Peter Wendley. Yeah, there's nothing you can do on that.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
All right.
I would move we approve the Metro Act right-of-way permit extension to AT&T.
Support.
Motion and support, discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item G, health insurance renewal. Connie?
All right, these are the numbers from, our agent is Dolly Martinson with Great Northern Benefits. So to maintain our current coverage, which I believe we're actually obligated to maintain at least that per our fire department contract. It's overall a 7.7% change from our current. And again, we're still a small group, so we're based on actual age of each employee. So you can see as it goes one through eight on the employees, how much, the different ends, the low and high ends. So that renewal and open enrollment will be for December 1st. Well, open enrollment will start November 1st.
And I don't mean to be rude. I wish the marina people were still sitting here because this is 7.7% increase for us on health insurance. You know? Sorry.
Should have put this before on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, I, so anyway.
We're fine anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't.
So.
So what do you guys recommend, keeping the current or changing it?
Option A, renewal.
Basically, we have to for almost everybody on this list, right?
Yep.
Yep, so.
Bob Sokolnicki and I have not spent the time on this, but part of the agreement with the fire department was that we would work with them. He and I would work together to try to find a cheaper option for health insurance. He and I just talked about that last week. He's been busy. I've been busy, you know? So we will try to get that done and see if there's a better option out there, but it's tough to find anything better.
Yeah. There is an opportunity to get, I think, departments together so you have a larger group.
Right.
So you can have ratings for, you know, single, couple, and family, but no one's ever been able to make it work yet.
Right.
According to Dolly, when we called her during the negotiations.
Yep, nobody's been able to put it together.
Yeah, so.
Is there only eight that take on this?
Yes. Well, there's probably one more now. But again, even the people who aren't on here, it still wouldn't be a big enough group to, to change, to move us up into a different category. I'd make the motion to renew our health insurance at the option A level.
Support.
Motion and support. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. So EPS security cameras, last time this was on the agenda, you guys voted to choose the EPS option for that grant application. The grant application deadline was September 15th. They make their decision within 60 days. So we still haven't heard whether, whether we're going to get that money. But I wanted to bring this back to you. Dave Triplet is kind of standing by from EPS. I'm assuming we're going to want to do this whether we get that 2,500 or not. So we, we didn't actually vote to move forward with the actual cameras. And I wanted to bring this back to you guys to make sure that that was the case before I tell them to go ahead and start the project. So.
When was that approved, Jeff?
That was approved two, it wasn't last month, I don't think. It was a month before, I believe.
Must have been.
Yeah, it would have been the.
August.
August meeting.
Yeah, I think it was August because he had to have the application in by September 15th.
So what do you want from us?
I just want.
Go ahead and buy the cameras and start the project?
To approve the project if that's what we want to do.
I move we start the project and move ahead with it, buy the cameras and install them.
Support.
EPS.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be from the August meeting.
Yep, we have a motion and support. Any other discussion about it? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I'd just like to add that we can, I can get reimbursed for the, the township can get reimbursed for at least one camera because we'll be getting a new drop box for absentee ballots and they have to have a security camera on them. So I should be able to get reimbursed for at least one and I'll find out more this Friday.
But we have potential to get this grant as well.
Yes.
So.
Yeah.
So Connie and I talked to Dave Triplet from EPS about that and he said he can set up a separate camera with, because it needs special.
I've got to have, camera has got to be active on it and stored.
22 months?
Yeah.
22 months.
It's got to be active for 75 days during each election season and then retained for 22 months. It's what I know so far. Lot of changes.
Yeah. So we had a motion and support. Any other discussion?
I think I wrote down a vote.
Did I already vote? Oh, we already did.
We already did it.
Sorry. Moving on to item I, Parks and Rec appointment, Township Board designee, Jordan Gallagher has some interest in serving on that. That committee, he's not here tonight, so now would be a perfect time to appoint him. Just kidding. So he, he seemed to be very interested. He was going to talk to his wife about it, so.
We're good, double support.
Yeah, yes. So we'll kind of table this till, we'll table this till he's back.
Yeah, unless somebody else wants to jump in and volunteer.
That's why we left it on here.
I thought I was getting set up, but I'm really happy, so.
Yeah. Well, we can, we can appoint you. Well, we can, we can appoint you.
We'll wait for Jordan to come back.
You know, Jordan has young kids and they use the park and it seemed like a really good fit.
Yeah.
So.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and it's, you know, only meeting quarterly maybe.
Does he have to be here to be, not, does he not, can he be appointed?
He could be, but he hasn't talked to his wife yet and I haven't met her, but I don't want her coming down here after me.
Well, this doesn't take long to readdress.
Yeah, so I think we'll table it until he's here.
Yeah, all right.
So, does that work for you, Sarah? Okay. Item 11, Dave, payment of invoices.
Pay the invoices in the amount of $66,956.91. I'll support that.
Okay, motion and support, discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And extended public comment, it is 7:10, they'd like to open public comment, anything? Zach, anything?
Not today.
Yeah, how's it, how's it been going for, filling in for Eric?
It's been going good.
I shouldn't say filling in for, filling his shoes.
Oh, yeah, whole time.
Yeah, yeah.
Things are ramping up a little bit, ramping up, I'm building.
Yeah.
Seems like dramas, ramping up again with finance department.
Oh, yeah, well.
The fancy board made up.
Yeah.
It'll settle down just about time the election starts.
Yeah, well, fortunately, short-term rentals are pretty much done in most townships, so.
Yeah, I heard about those two years ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, alrighty, it is 7:11 and this meeting is adjourned, thank you everybody.